Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. I'd ask the clerk to please announce the meeting and call the roll.
A special session of the Unified Government has been called to be held Thursday, January 7th, 2016 at 5:00 PM in the Fifth Floor Conference Room for a presentation of the Chamber's legislative agenda, followed by a review of the community's survey questions. The call has been amended to add an executive session immediately following regarding litigation. Roll call. Kane?
Here.
Markley?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Philbrook?
Here.
Bynum?
Here.
Walker? Townsend?
Here.
McKeonan?
Here.
Murgia?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Holland?
Here. Thank you very much. Welcome to our Friends of the KCK Chamber. And I will turn it over to you, Doug. Do you have any, Mr. Bach, do you have any presentation? So we'll turn it over to you for your presentation. Thank you for being here tonight.
Great. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Commission, Mayor, and staff. My name's Valerie Musset, and I'm with Design Mechanical, which is a local company. We've been in Kansas City, Kansas since 2003, or the inception of our company. And we employ over 150 employees here in Kansas City, Kansas. I also come to you as the Chair of the Kansas City, Kansas Chamber of Commerce. And with that, we're excited for 2016. We have a great staff on board now. We're fully staffed. I'm looking forward to everyone working together. The focus this year is going to be on collaboration with ourselves, the UG, WEDC, CVP, and others in our community. So with the new staff this year, we've, I want to introduce the Executive Director that we have on board now, and that is Daniel Silva, and he's going to continue on.
Thank you again for having us. I'm really excited to be here. I am one month on the job. Definitely enjoying it. It's been a great experience thus far. I think the support that has been exhibited has been tremendous. I'm very much looking forward to positioning this chamber as a proactive partner to the community, business community, and community at large. I come to this role from the Greater Kansas City Chamber of Commerce, where I was the Director of Diversity and Inclusion, working closely with minority women on business owners, creating equitable access for opportunities to business owners. I also oversaw the GenKC Group, which is a young professionals group focused on recruitment and retention of young professionals to the region. We engage them in activities of social networking, philanthropy, and professional development. And again, very excited to be here. I think the work that the committee has done has been tremendous. I think you'll be pleased with the agenda that we're putting forward, and if enacted, I think will be a very positive thing for Kansas City, Kansas, and Wyandotte County. Mike Smallwood is the Chair of our Legislative Committee, and I'm going to cede the rest of my time so that he can go over the platform. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you, Daniel. Thank you, Val. Thank you, Commissioners, Mayor, and staff. I'm Mike Smallwood, President of Smallwood, President of Smallwood Lock Supply. How's that? Is that better?
Excellent.
And we've been a business in Kansas City, Kansas since 1912. I went back and looked at the census, and the earliest census record for my grandfather was the 1910 census, and he lived right down here on, on N, right where the parking lot is for, for City Hall. But anyway, moving on to the agenda, the Kansas City, Kansas Chamber legislative agenda that you have before you is the culmination of more than a dozen meetings, hundreds of hours of time spent by more than 50 individuals in the community. As Daniel said, our objective's clear, to create a legislative platform that, if enacted, will make Kansas City, Kansas, and Wyandotte County an even better place to own a business, grow a business, live, work, raise a family, and prosper. To do that, we need your support and partnership. And we're asking for that, and we're going to continue to reach out to you and try to engage as much as we can, because we believe there's a lot of things that we can work together on and move the community forward. I must also thank several Commissioners, the Mayor and his staff, and Mike Taylor for their input and feedback throughout the process. It's rare that Mike ever misses a Legislative Committee meeting, so hopefully, he's been giving you some, some good feedback on, on what we've done. So let's go into our agenda. And the first item on our agenda is really more of a request of, of our legislators in Topeka than it is a legislative item. The Chamber believes that, to be most effective, our elected officials must act in a transparent and clear way when considering legislation, one that allows ample opportunity for public engagement and review. We saw some results of the opposite of that this, in the 2015 session in Topeka. We don't think that's productive for anyone and leads to, to potentially some troublesome legislation going as, as we move forward. So, so now let's jump into the, the agenda. The local agenda, we, the Chamber supports a property tax appraisal process that provides a high level of certainty and consistency. That's important for the, the business community as, as we, as we move forward. Star bond revenue. As the Unified Government begins to discuss star bond distribution, as a business community that we represent, a distribution that adds, we request a distribution that adds a, a long-term benefit to the community. We also request that the process include public discussion, and that involves the business community in a meaningful way.
I want to speak to that. We've had our listening tour that's engaged about over 700 residents, and we're working currently to find two dates where we can do that specifically with the business community to get your input as well.
That's terrific.
So we're trying to coordinate one, we'd like to coordinate one with the Chamber. Merle Bland is working on both of these, and one with Business West. So we're trying to do two, one on the east side of the county and one on the west.
I think that's terrific.
So we absolutely need your input.
That's, that's great, and we'll be, we'll be happy to provide it. And thank you very much for, for doing that and, and providing our ability for us to, to add to the discussion. Okay. First one on the state agenda is, is payday, payday lending. We strongly request that payday loan laws be reformed in a way that our citizens know what the loan ramifications are, and that the payoff process be simple and easy to understand. And I have to personally thank Commissioner Johnson for bringing that issue to our attention and providing valuable input. Ken Williams with Catholic Charities has a, a process to help rescue people from, from payday loans. Payday loan companies provide no value to the community and just suck economic life out of it. And, but the payoff process is terrible. It's, what, five hours, I think I was told, for an experienced banker to get somebody out of a payday loan. And we think if, the best way to attack this from the beginning is to provide a, an easy payoff term for the, for the consumer. Urban Opportunity Zones. We fully support those, and to help revitalize our community and believe that there needs to be additional tools to address blight. And I'd like to thank Commissioner McKeonan for helping us expand that item to include blighted tax current properties. That was an, an issue that he brought to our attention. Abandoned, oh, I got that one. Abandoned structures. Okay. As a Chamber, we oppose any changes to gaming provisions that would negatively impact Hollywood casino operations. Jumping, jumping back, okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. All right. The, the abandoned structures one, you can see KCK supports the legislation. I think we did, we did talk about that. We talked about the abandoned structures, the blight. Yes, we did. Yes. Fort Leavenworth. We believe that our elected officials should continue to support investment in Fort Leavenworth, a facility that provides great economic benefit here in Wyandotte County and throughout the state. On to healthcare. The Chamber urges the state to develop a Kansas-specific healthcare plan that assists our most vulnerable citizens, low-income and working poor. A program that is stable and economically viable in the long term. And whatever that is, there are many states around the country that have modified Medicaid proposals, and that's what we support. And we think that a Kansas solution is probably the best, rather than trying to just duplicate what someone else has done. Public education. We support the creation of a new public education formula that allows USD 500, 202, 203, and 204, and all districts within Kansas to provide high-quality education to our students. All children in our community should have the opportunity to attend well-funded, successful public schools, ones that have rigorous standards and maintain local control of curriculum development. Additionally, we support a fair funding formula that allows the community colleges to continue to provide work-ready graduates. Regulation. We oppose any state mandate that does not carry with it appropriate state funding to carry out that mandate, especially ones that place a budget burden on local government. Furthermore, we believe that the state should close a so-called LLC loophole. It's been talked about to create tax equity across all types of Kansas businesses. It shouldn't make a difference whether you're an LLC or a S corporation. The tax implications should be the same, and they're currently not. We oppose any increase to the state's sales tax rate and strongly support lowering of sales tax on food. Both of these place an undue burden on those least able to handle increased taxation. Origin versus destination-based sales tax. The, the KCK Chamber supports an origin-based sales tax. The current system in place in Kansas is destination-based. I can speak for that. As, as our company, we, in the state of Kansas, have over 800, nearly 900 taxing jurisdictions. Each of the taxing jurisdictions has potentially its own rate. We're required, whenever we ship a product or whenever we provide service, in one of these other taxing jurisdictions to collect the appropriate tax at the appropriate rate and remit that to the state. And it creates an onerous burden on, on business. When they had the statewide tax change that went through in last year, we had to hire a programmer to come in and change our tax rates for us. So an origin-based system would allow much ease, easier way to collect and remit taxes to the state. Transportation. We believe that funding a T-Works transportation program is vital to the future of a business-friendly Kansas and growth in Wyandotte County. Tourism. We believe that tourism is vital to Kansas City, Kansas, and Kansas, and Wyandotte County, and request that the state create a comprehensive tourism plan in order to generate new-to-Kansas tax dollars. University of Kansas Medical Center and the KU Hospital are vital to our city, state, and region. Funding should be maintained. Amateur athletics ticket sales. We recently learned that Kansas, believe it or not, is the only state in the nation that imposes a sales tax on amateur sports ticket sales. We don't know the origin of that. It may have to do with when the NCAA was in Kansas. We don't know. But that places in jeopardy many collegiate championship events from choosing Kansas City, Kansas, and the state, particularly that, two of those most recent ones were the Division II Championship that they had at Sporting, as well as the Division I Soccer Tournament, Tournament. And Wichita also has championship events, and the NCAA is going to consider potentially not locating those here in the future if something's not done with the, the sales tax. Okay, those are the highlights of our state agenda. If you indulge me, though, I would like to talk a little bit about a couple of the items that we have on our federal platform. The Kansas City, Kansas Chamber opposes federal mandates that would result in excessive utility rate increases that would be deemed burdensome to residents and detrimental to business recruitment and retention. And then on taxation, a similar item here, Marketplace Fairness Act. Kansas City, Kansas Chamber supports, strongly supports collection of sales tax and use tax on e-commerce sales provided. That the tax is origin-based and not destination-based, and does not place an undue burden on Kansas City, Kansas businesses that sell their products and services outside the area. We're one of those companies. We sell pretty much to every state. We sold locker locks to 47 states this past year. Under the, some of the proposals in Congress, we would have to file a tax return in every single state that we ship to and have to, have to know the laws that are applicable in that state. For example, in the state of California, some schools pay tax, and we don't know that. So we, we support an origin-based system and send the money to Topeka with a zip code report and let them figure out how to split it up amongst the states. And lastly, we support the efforts of Congresswoman Yoder and others that are seeking to invest significantly more dollars in the National Institutes of Health in order to find cures and effective treatments for diseases that impact so many and add billions to healthcare costs. We have been told that this will directly benefit the life-saving work happening right here at Kansas City, Kansas, at the KU Med Center. So, thank you again for your time tonight. Once again, I encourage you to review our platform in detail. We will be reaching out to the community to continue to work with our team to ensure that this agenda is acted on for the benefit of Kansas City, Kansas, and Wyandotte County. I might also mention that we have both Kathy Dameron as our state lobbyist and John Stevens, who's sitting back and back, who was most recently our interim Executive Director, but is now serving as a consultant assisting us in these initiatives. As we continue to work to represent the business community of Kansas City, Kansas, and Wyandotte County, we would ask for your support and feedback on these and other issues. Thank you.
Any questions? Commissioner Philbrook?
Well, this is just more of, I think you skipped over something, but I want to make sure that, that community gets to hear that, and that the state gets to hear this, and that's the Kansas City, Kansas Chamber supports a repeal of the 2015 tax law placed on local communities. I just want to make an emphasis on that, because that really binds us on what we can do in the future. And I know you didn't mean to leave that out. You just needed a new eye doctor, that's all.
Well, yeah.
Who wrote, who wrote it's draft?
It's John's fault. No, we, we will be looking into that and getting into that in writing. We would be-
It's on there. It's on your sheet.
Is it? Is it? Okay.
All right. Commissioner Kane?
Thank you, Mayor. Are you guys affiliated with the State Chamber?
Are we affiliated? What, what do you mean by?
We are members of the State Chamber. We haven't really engaged too much in their activities as of yet. We're, we feel that we should be involved if we would like to have a voice in what they're doing. So rather than calling it a support of the Chamber or opposition of the Chamber, we feel that we need to be there and be a voice for this community, business community with regard to the state.
Can I add to that? I have not spoken with anyone at the State Chamber on any of these issues. These were developed exclusively with the Legislative Committee for the Kansas City, Kansas Chamber of Commerce. I've not spoken with anyone at the State on any of these, the State Chamber. Now, if they happen to align, that's a coincidence. If they happen to differ, that's a coincidence, too. I mean, we have not spoken with them on, on any of this.
I am positive you haven't, because you wouldn't have put some of this stuff down.
Well, good.
You know, I mean, there's, there's, you are literally telling just the opposite, because they, they actually pushed for a lot of the changes. You know, and, and I think that's the interest. I mean, I like what you've got.
Thank you.
I wish you'd had the prevailing wage and home rule for Wyandotte County, but they have literally pushed for, for things that have actually really, really hurt Wyandotte County.
We feel that we have to be a member so that when we get this, this agenda complete, we can go up and visit with them and tell them what we think about it. In fact, I've been talking about, my company belongs to the State Chamber for that very reason. And I had a lengthy discussion with them on the destination versus origin sales tax, because they take a different position than that. And, you know, the destination tax, the way it's implemented, is primarily a big business, you know, benefit. It's, it's anti-small business provision, because I can't comply. At the federal level, I called, I called Congressman Yoder's office and talked to them for about 45 minutes and said, why do you want to pass a law at the federal level that'll make me a criminal from day one? I can't comply with that law. So.
And I'm glad you're doing this, and I know you, you need to be there, but when you're talking to them, you might tell them.
I'm, I'm going to be really nice.
I'm waiting.
You, you might tell them that they're killing us, and, and it's, they, they literally get up and, and give this total opposite story of, of what's really needed in, in the communities, and it's, it's affecting us, it's affecting Wichita, and it's affecting Lawrence, you know, and even with the school stuff. So if they're ever here in town and you want somebody to talk to them, call me.
Well, we realize as, as, as business representatives, that for our businesses to be successful, we have to have a successful and vibrant community. And that, you know, that requires everything, that, you know, the good jobs, good schools, everything. So that's what we, that's what we're trying to support.
And, and that's exactly my point, just what you said. What they've done has affected us with the prevailing wage. What they've also helped do was with the school, with the way that they did that, and also the, the 33,000 people that don't, the doctors, lawyers, that don't have to pay-
133,000.
Okay. Farmers, you know, and money that, that would help us get out of the hole. The State Chamber said, no, you know, we like it the way it is. And, and if I were you guys, if, if you're there and you don't like it, maybe you should, you ought to tell them in a more aggressive way, you know, because, and I can help. I can write it up if you want.
I'll be happy to carry that forward. But I'm also known as very direct, and so, you know, sensitivity is not always my strongest suit.
One of the things, too, that I'm working on with our federal delegation, that I've talked to them about for the last couple of years, but want to get more specific with, is addressing the lobbying for levies and levy funding. I think the flooding in St. Louis highlights the risks and dangers of an aging levy system. And when you add up the amount of business valuation being protected by the levies in Kansas City, Kansas, it would be decimating to our community to have the kind of flooding that they're having right now in, in other parts of the country. And I had a good conversation with Senator Moran about that, and looking at doing a joint policy with Mayor James and the folks in Kansas City, Missouri, because it affects all of us. So that levy funding, you might consider, I'm actually coming to your meeting in the morning. We can talk a little more about it. But I think we're going to need to add some voices together, because we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars for, to refurbish and shore up our levies. But I don't want to be on CNN for broken levies in Kansas City, Kansas. I'd rather be on CNN as a model city for all that's right in America, which is where we're headed, of course. So. All right. Anybody, anyone else have a question or comment for the Chamber?
Yeah, I can, as a small business person. Can I do that?
Go ahead.
So, not speaking as a Commissioner, but taking advantage of the fact that I'm here. Speaking as a small business person and being, having a business that is a corporation, and being given the opportunity not to have to pay all those terrible corporate taxes, my comment is, is I would pay, I would rather pay those corporate taxes and support my community than go along with taking that away. Because the reason you have a corporation is not to pay taxes, and you can figure out a lot of ways to spend your money and negate the amount you have to pay and be legal. So you don't need to take what little bits left away from the community. You know, I'd rather pay the taxes that I owe, contribute to my community than not. And I'm sure there's a lot of other small businesses that feel that way, too, because they don't save that much money. I doubt that the amount of money that most of the small businesses save is minimal, but you add all of us up, and it counts. So that's just coming from a small business person.
Understood.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, Daniel, and Valerie, and Mike. We appreciate your coming. John, we appreciate your coming as well. Thank you for your work on our behalf at the Chamber, and we appreciate this legislative update, and look forward to joining our voices together, because this parallels much of the, of the legislative agenda that we have here at the Unified Government, and we appreciate the opportunity to join our voices together. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you in the morning.
All right. Yeah, go ahead. We're, that brings us to our next item, and for that, I'll turn it over to Doug Bach.
Thank you, Mayor. As was directed by the Commission, staff has been moving forward to work on a community survey. This is one of those steps that, going through the process, we have Mike Grimm in our research department, who is leading up this effort. What we've done is put out in, early in December, Mike went through and showed you a copy of the last community survey we did. I think that's provided the opportunity for many of the Commissioners to come forward, offer some questions that they may have to him, some changes they'd like to see on the survey. So tonight, I have Mike here and ETC, who we have under contract- we have under contract now to work the contract. I'm going to have him go ahead and lead us in a presentation through this of what he's worked up, and then there'll be time to go ahead and work through some of the questions we have on there. And also, he has a few issues for us to set out and decide from a financial perspective or in provide direction as which way we'd like to go. So, with that, Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Doug. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank Chris Tatham for being here tonight with ETC. I think a lot of you probably recognize him, but he's very good at what he does. And so, I'm going to start the discussion, but at any time, if there's any questions for Chris or he feels like he needs to jump in, he'll go ahead and do that. Three areas I'd like to focus on tonight regarding the community survey is a quick review of the calendar, and then we'll jump into the survey scope and cost. And then finally, we'll look at a draft of the survey. I'll call it the base survey, and then question- unique questions that some Commissioners submitted. And there's an option to add a page of unique questions for each Commission District. So, on the calendar, December 1st through the 18th, the survey questions were sent out to elected officials and senior managers for review, and we received some input during that timeframe. January 7th through the 19th, February 19th, of course, tonight's a special session, and expect to get some good feedback and some direction on where we want to go with revisions of the questions on the survey. And then, towards the end of that period, the last three, four weeks, I'll work with Chris, but I'll assume it's going to be ETC more so kind of finalizing the survey questions and getting a product ready to send out to the community. And then, February 20th through March 31st, ETC will do their work, conduct the survey, work on results, and the creation of a final report. And then, finally, in April, at a date to be determined, ETC will come back and present the results of the survey. Survey scope and cost. As the contract is written and signed, the cost is $46,400. That gets us 1,200 completed surveys countywide, and that bound of error, 2.8, plus or minus 2.8 percent. Per Commission District, that's 150 completed surveys, that bound of error 8.1 percent. That table on the bottom, I think most of you have seen this before, and we reviewed it. It lays out the options. If we want to get more completed surveys countywide and per Commission District, you can see how that changes that bound of error of 2.8 percent to 2.4 to 1.8, for example, on the county side, and the associated cost with that. So, any questions on this slide of where we're going and how the contract's written at this point for the cost and the level of service and results we're going to get? Continuing with the scope of the survey, there's discussion of adding a one-page of unique Commissioner District questions. The- if all Commission Districts wanted to add a page of unique questions, it's 2,000 per district times eight, that's $16,000. That gets us up to $62,400. This is a, call it a scalable option. If one Commission District or however many number wanted to do this option, that can be done. I think I'll jump ahead. Something to think about on that option. The survey contract is currently- has a seven-page maximum, and if we have a page of unique Commission District questions, we'll have to shave off a page of questions, give us six pages of the base survey, and then one page for each Commission District that chooses to have a page of unique questions. So, I think it's my assumption that if one Commissioner wants one page of unique question, that base survey, six pages, and every other Commissioner and their district has to work with that six-page base survey. I guess the option exists to have the questions that are deleted back in, but am I right, Chris, that-
No. If just one Commission, we just have to identify what set of questions would be deleted. So, there would be seven pages up for the county of questions, but if one district wanted special questions, they'd lose one page just because the survey really can't be longer than seven pages or people won't do it. That's just our experience.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Yep, it does. Thank you.
So, that district would lose that common-
But just that one district. Okay. Okay, good. So, that's something to keep in mind. And then, the second bullet, this came up a little later. Staff had a question of being able to see a summary of the results by city, and we'll look at this, get into this a little more when we look at a draft of the survey. Right now, as the contract's written, the results are going to be summarized at the Commission District level. So, the question was, if we want to look at specifically Kansas City, Kansas, Bonner Springs, or Edwardsville, what, you know, can we do this? And Chris said, "For that cost," but that would just be, I mean, for the processing over sampling, but the results would just be the data, and I suppose just, Chris, just some- just some quick summaries. No cross-tabulations, no GIS mapping, anything like that. So, any questions on this information?
In terms of Bonner Springs and Edwardsville, would it be possible to just do Bonner Springs and Edwardsville and not do Kansas City, Kansas? Because I think the district by district and the countywide would be sufficient for us. I think the Bonner Springs and Edwardsville specific answers would not change the outcome of the whole county's data percentage-wise, whereas the whole county's data could skew Bonner Springs and Edwardsville data.
Yeah. Mayor, the actual- the bulk of that cost is for Bonner Springs and Edwardsville. There's only about 1,750, I think, would be for Kansas City, Kansas. That would just be to process the data separately.
Okay.
You wouldn't have to do any additional surveys for KCK.
Okay. Commissioner Philbrook?
I have a question on the number of surveys. At 1,200 surveys returned, completed, wouldn't that be less than a 1% rate of return, or I should say, less than 1% sample? Is that a good sample?
Yeah. You're looking at, you're probably, when you're thinking about the 1%, that's typically used for a lot of health studies and things like that, which require a higher level of precision and accuracy. For a community attitude survey like this, the sample size is fine. We're looking at a 95% level of confidence versus a 99%, and that's traditionally acceptable for this type of survey.
Commissioner Markian?
So, I have several comments on this project. So, I'll stick with Commissioner Bynum's theme of the number of surveys. I hear what you're saying, that that number of surveys for a city our size is statistically significant, but I think what is not clear to the Commission is that when you try to break that information down and try to actually do something with the data, for example, within a particular district or a neighborhood or a particular area of the city, the data pool is so small that you have to target a bigger geographic area, and therefore, you don't get the same results you would if you were looking at a smaller area. So, I'm going to give- I'm going to give the Commission an example. For those of you that are new, in 2007 or 2008, around that time, when I first became a Commissioner, I worked with ETC. I think they're fabulous. You do great work to do a survey of my district. And I'll give you a great example. So, this is a picture. I love map coding. This bottom picture right here, I'm sorry, you can't all see it, but I think it's good enough for the point. The bottom picture, all the bright blue, is referencing snow removal, which means that I got a really good grade on snow removal in my district, in that area. Yellow is kind of neutral, so that's still, I would say, above average. So, if I got this and I was looking at snow removal in my district, I would probably go to Mike Tobin and say, "Great job, Mike Tobin. Now, alls I want you to do is take these yellow areas in between, and I want you to see if you can't improve those areas." Because remember, this is just District 3. This is just Argentine and Rosedale. Now, when I look at our countywide survey, because the pool is so small, the area to be statistically significant has to be so much greater. My district is getting a D in snow removal. Well, I call it a D. I'm almost flunking snow removal on the countywide survey. So, if I would have gotten this, and not this, I would have went to Mike Tobin and said, "Are you pushing any snow in my district? Is anything happening there?" So, how the data is- so, there- so, Chris, I know you're being upfront when you say it's statistically significant, but I think it's important for the Commissioners to know, many of us are very focused on our district, and if we want to make impacts within our districts, we need to drill down deeper. And it took me a while to sort of get my head around this. So, I would like- the other thing is, I understand the whole issue with Bonner Springs and Edwardsville and Kansas City, Kansas, and the different cities. I think we can greatly reduce the size of the survey by not separating city and county. I say, we are the unified government, and alls we are doing is asking questions about government services, whether they be provided by the city or the county. And then, areas like Bonner Springs and Edwardsville, you'd be able to get pretty close to block-by-block data as to- so, for example, I'll use this example. If I live in Bonner Springs and I'm asked quality of police, and I say the quality of police is good, that's going to show up on this map in Bonner Springs. So, I know that the rating, the people I'm rating, the police officers I'm rating, are Bonner Springs police officers. If I'm- if I live in the city and I respond that it's good, then it's going to show up on the map as good in Kansas City, Kansas. So, it's a way to differentiate without the resident having to determine what is a county position versus what is a city position. And literally, I spent about an hour with Mike today, right before the meeting, and kind of went over it with him, and it could literally cut a couple of pages out of the survey. Now, the negative to that is that when you want to get survey results from more people, you have to send out more surveys. So, I'll give you an example. How many- Chris, you sent out 1,600 surveys for a countywide survey?
Oh, which one?
The 14 one in 2014.
1,600 responses.
How many surveys did you send out?
Probably about four times that. So, usually, it's about four to five times that, so-
So, 5,000?
Five to 10. Or if it's 1,600, probably around 8,000.
Okay. So, he sent out 8,000 surveys for 150,000 people. I'm giving rough numbers, you know. I know it's less than that. In my district, for the survey I did, you have to consider we have 20,000 people in the district. I sent out, with Chris, 4,500 surveys, which allowed me to get that block-by-block data. Let me give you another example. So, I'll use a different- a couple of different districts. Commissioner McKeonan, you're all familiar with the St. Peter area. 16th and 17th Street, we all know this, are very good blocks where there's a great sense of community, well-taken care of homes, and people enjoy where they live. But if you step one block over, you can ask Commissioner McKeonan this, you will get a completely different response about the neighborhood. And it's important for Commissioner McKeonan to have that detailed level of information in order to make day-to-day decisions and for him to prioritize what he would like to lobby for at budget time in the way of financing within his district. So, I think that level of data is very important. Let me give you another example. Commissioner Markley represents prime- well, a large portion of Argentine, but mostly Turner. If you don't know anything about Turner, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but stormwater runoff, drainage issues because of the hilly terrain are issues, okay? There's a stormwater runoff question in here. If she gets- if we do less surveys, we have to take into account a bigger area which is outside of Turner, which could include Argentine, where we don't have as many stormwater runoff issues. And so, it dilutes the issue that Commissioner Markley is trying to fight within her district. With this deeper study, she'll be able to determine literally block-by-block what areas she wants to earmark with public works for stormwater issues to be addressed. Now, from a whole overarching county perspective, the reality is, I think we've all been here long enough to realize we have a little bit of money and we have a lot to do that costs a lot of money. And so, when we're prioritizing, I think we can do creative things like Commissioner Markley clearly, when we look at this level of data, has the greatest need for stormwater runoff. Commissioner McKeonan, I'm making this up, by the way. I'm just speculating as an example. Commissioner McKeonan clearly has the highest percentage of abandoned houses. Commissioner Townsend may have the highest percentage of abandoned vacant lots. And when we allocate our resources, we allocate them in accordance with the area of greatest need for that particular issue. So, though I think the first survey was a nice attempt, and my comment would be there are ways to- that Mike and I have talked about, that we could combine the city and county questions, just ask about government services, get the drill-down data. We all need to actually roll up our sleeves and actually do some work within our district individually so we can be better as a whole county.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner McKeonan?
Well, and certainly, Commissioner Markley and I were the part of the original team that met and got this first one going. And one of the reasons that we went with the confidence levels that we went with was simply because it was the cheapest option we had, and we really didn't- hadn't pre-allocated any money because we came at the October retreat and said, "My God, we need a survey, and it needs to happen right now." So, we were constrained by that. But as you know, I've really started to map much more granularly within my district in terms of housing, in terms of tax status, and most recently, been mapping at just the census tract level with census data in terms of poverty, educational attainment level, unemployment. And I will say, it has been striking to look at a heat map, for example, of poverty rate, broken up just by the census tracts, where bluer is better and redder is bad. It's like, "Oh, my goodness, I have one census tract that glows red." And that's something I wouldn't have gotten if I'd stuck with my district-level census data. So, Mike was nice enough to give me my census tract-level data, and it was a real eye-opener. And so, that's real- so, my map that I've created and then the mapping I've done just at the census tract level has really opened my eyes to the utility of having data that goes much deeper into detail within my particular district. May help me to ask questions I wouldn't ordinarily ask. For example, in one of my census tracts where the poverty rate is 67%, I have to ask, "What factors in that geography, in that demography, leads me to have such a high poverty rate?" And if I can get a handle on those factors, I may be able to get a handle on a solution to those factors a little bit faster than if I looked broadly across the district. So, recognizing that we still have the constraint of funds, but I think that if we could find a way, maybe to modify the length of the survey, maybe to consider the additional questions, but if we could send out more surveys and get down to the, I think your- the last line on that original table was plus or minus five within the district, that, to me, would be a major step forward because it would give us the same great county data, the same great city data, the same great district data, but boy, it would allow me to get much deeper and maybe target my interventions a little bit better. So, I think if we can find a way to pull it off, I think there'd be a great utility to do that.
Commissioner Markley?
So, as Commissioner Murgia mentioned, last survey came back, and we had this priority listed in the survey where people in the community got to tell what was their highest priority, and stormwater came back as District 6 priority. And I was like, "Great, now I'm not crazy anymore. I can tell people for sure this is a problem. It's not just me." But the problem that I faced then was, it just- my whole district just showed up with this higher priority. I can't tell where in my district those stormwater problems are. Now, I kind of know some of them, obviously, because I've either been approached or I've just lived there long enough. But so, as we're doing our district-specific questions, I said I wanted a question, kind of trying to drill down and say, "Are there stormwater issues at your house? Like, where are they?" And Commissioner Murgia says, "Well, why do you have that question? Wasn't that answered last time?" And I said, "No, because I can't tell where it is." So, if we could get the level of detail that Commissioners Murgia and McKeonan are talking about, I wouldn't even need that other question on a district-specific survey because it would be answered by the level of data I was re- specific survey, because it would be answered by the level of data I was receiving by sending out more surveys to begin with. I wouldn't just have one whole district that said, "It's a priority." I would be able to drill down and see where in my district that problem existed. So that's just one example that's specific to my district, but for each of our districts, we had something that came back as the highest priority. We would all be able to look and see, not only was it the highest priority for our district as a whole, but where in our district those, those answers were coming from, and, and why it was important to specific neighborhoods.
Commissioner Walker?
Well, I'm probably going to be the lone voice. I'm not a survey guy.
We know.
I, uh, I find limited utility in them, because first of all, the district boundaries are not drawn in any kind of, they're like the Middle East, they're drawn by, by people that had no, no sense of tribal or religious affinities. Um, it, to me, you know, if you're, if you have a neighborhood, um, the St. Peters neighborhood, okay, we, we can define what the St. Peters neighborhood is. We can define what, uh, various other neighborhoods are. But when you do it by district, um, your, your boundaries often include disparate or dissimilar, uh, groupings of people. Um, number one, another reason I, I don't like surveys is, um, they're almost predictable what the results are going to be. I would be very surprised if the top four or five things aren't the top four or five things that have always been the result of the survey. Um, and say the examples given by Commissioner McGee are, are correct, and it comes back that in Turner, there's drainage problems. Are we going to allocate all our drainage money to Turner as a result of that, and forego the drainage problems in, uh, well, Commissioner Philbrook's, I know, has drainage problems? And, uh, abandoned housing. Uh, I'm not giving up abandoned housing, uh, in one district in favor of another, simply because the survey says, "It's a bigger problem in my district than it is in your district." Um, that's not how we've allocated funding. We allocate a certain amount of funding for abandoned housing, and as far as I know, we've never specified that, "Well, as a result of the survey, uh, we're going to put all this abandoned housing money in District Five, or we're going to put all the drainage money in another." I, 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 I see the, the survey, uh, I mean, why don't we do it this way? If we want a, a good turnout, why don't we give, uh, I, I had a guy call me today on the phone, that I'd want a seven-day trip to the Bahamas if I would just complete this survey. Why don't we give a prize?
When are you going?
As an encouragement, no, I'm, I'm being, a reasonable prize, not a trip to the Bahamas. But you want surveys to return, what sentence for the people to return them? Give them something to re, to justify it, a five hundred dollars. I know that sounds ridiculous, but I bet your results will be higher, if there's some benefit to, to returning them. I don't, I don't, I don't like surveys, I don't think any of us who have had any experience in government, especially you district commissioners that are, uh, focused on your district, don't have a, a pretty good handle on what the problems are in your area. And we're going to spend a hundred and nine thousand dollars on a survey, but we don't have enough money to allocate to a number of projects that you've all voiced. Um, you know, if you're all in favor of it, uh, I'm not going to be, you know, I'm glad to get what the results are, but I'll be very surprised if there's anything that is surprising to any of us as an outcome of it, and we're going to wonder why we spent a hundred and nine thousand, and I think the taxpayers are going to wonder why, too.
Uh, Commissioner Kane, and then Philbrook, and then Townsend, and then Murgia.
I agree with Hal. I don't need a survey to tell me what's going on in the district, I mean, because they're calling you with the issue, saying, "Here's what I got." And if they're not calling you, they might not like you. But, well, I'm telling you, I get calls from other, other districts, and I say, "I'm not your commissioner, I want to talk to you anyway." But here's the deal. We should know what's going on in our district. I don't need a survey to tell me what's going on, a, and there are two streets nicer than just what she, what Commissioner Murgia said over in St. Peters. But, but here's the deal, we should know what's going on in our district, and if, if we don't, then shame on us. You know, we're the, we're the ones that answer the emails, we're the ones that answer the calls, and they're saying, because we've all got issues with stormwater, you know, and, uh, and, and some of us got cows and a whole bunch of other things that a lot of other districts don't have. You know, we have farmland and stuff like that, but I, I don't want to send any kind of survey out. I think I know what's going on, a, and I just think it's a waste of money.
Commissioner Philbrook?
I understand wanting to know as much as possible about what, about what's going on in the minds of our constituents. I fully understand that, wanting to get down in, and that's really getting down into the weeds. You don't get much deeper than you do that, with knowing that much information. You got really down into the specs, and there's nothing wrong with that, because that's how we help support our people. But we also have a whole lot of people working for us, like in the water area, that can tell us exactly where the worst places are, and what's going on in our community, if we ask them, you know? And, because I get feedback all the time. Like, if somebody calls me and says, "Well, they didn't fix this right over there," then I've got to go talk to the, to those folks and say, "Well, why, why is it draining into this guy's yard now, instead of going around his yard like it used to?" They know where the problems are, and that's what we pay them to do. So maybe we're just not getting enough feedback from, from our, um, people that handle that, you know, that stuff. But that's what we pay Doug Bock and the people that work for him to help take care of that. Now, I'm, I'm not against having the information, but I'm kind of curious as to why we need that, that total extent of it, uh, that, that deep into it, spending that kind of money for that much. I mean, I'll go along with the rest of you guys, whatever you guys decide, but I'm not gung ho on having a really deep, um, one for a hundred and nine thousand dollars.
Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to say, my, my view of looking at the survey again was to be able to compare whatever goes out this time, assuming one does go out, with the results that came in at the last. Um, so I would not be in favor necessarily of changing it so drastically that you really can't compare apples and apples or oranges and oranges. Uh, I do agree that most of us have some idea of what's going on in our communities, uh, in our districts, but I think it's good to have that outreach. So I like the idea of a survey, and my hat is always off to, uh, Commissioner, uh, McKeonan. He is the stat man, he knows, and Commissioner Markley. But when I see the difference between, uh, the one hundred and fifty, uh, in the commissioned district that would go out at a cost of forty-six-four compared to a hundred and nine thousand, that, that gives me some concern. What I see is, I know in District One, vacant lots are an issue, um, economic development is an issue, so I'm seeing the sixty thousand dollars that I'd like to see put in for the development of that survey. So I would like to keep it as similar to what was done before, and that was the reason that I did not offer any, uh, new or additional questions. So I could see in District One, was an apple, two years ago was an apple now, an orange now, and later. I like the idea that if another commissioner did want to submit, uh, individual criteria, then that would affect the survey in that district, am I right? But not necessarily in District One. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Murgia, and then McKeonan.
You know, I guess maybe it's just the old-time academic in me. Um, but I do think there's a lot of, there's a lot of utility to surveys, and I, I do look at the data, and I try to look at the data very thoughtfully, and, and help it, help, use it to help me figure out targeting priorities and those kinds of things. Uh, I think one of the things, and you're right, lots of phone calls, lots of emails, but there are some people out there who are the unusual voices, who choose not to reach out, who suffer silently, and don't make that phone call. But if asked, and especially if asked anonymously, would absolutely share their opinion, would absolutely share their rating. So one of the things that a survey like this does is it gives us a chance to engage the unusual voices, uh, the people who aren't necessarily communicating with us regularly or at all, and to get feedback from them. And I think there's value, uh, to that. I do think there would be utility to it. Uh, I, I, I don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish. If I can use these data to help target better some of our larger dollar allocations, then I think, uh, it's worth it, uh, upfront. One of the questions that I do have, and it's not something we're going to be able to necessarily answer here tonight, though, is, is it possible, as we look at the various length of survey options, as we look at the various data analysis options, uh, is it possible that there's a way to mitigate that cost with a different length of survey, with a different, so it, that hundred and nine may not be a hundred and nine, once it's all said and done, and we have all of our options decided upon with length, and number of questions, and level of data analysis, et cetera. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's absolutely right. In fact, uh, for some of our clients that we work with, there's some, sometimes there's a district, uh, uh, that want the data, some don't. So there's usually a minimum level that you need, and that's kind of where you're at, at the hundred and fifty per district. But we've oftentimes worked with folks where maybe two or three commissioners want the higher sample, and you just increase it there. So you don't necessarily have to do four hundred in every district. It could just be, for those of you who want it, you just pay that incremental cost. So that way, if you don't really want to use the data, you don't have to, but that way, you still get the countywide information. And then all we do is wait the sample when we're done, so that way, we adjust the fact that we did more surveys in one district. We actually do a waiting process, so that every district still counts equally in the final results for the county. So that's, that's one option, that would bring it down creatively, if you didn't want to do it in all districts. The other option is to make the survey shorter, so that certainly makes a difference as well. But, uh, but those would be two ways you could potentially reduce the cost.
So we still have options as it comes to the total cost of operation here?
Yeah, well, until we actually administer it, you have a number of options. So, once you actually go to the field, then you, then you'll, you can't change it. But until you actually decide to get it going, and we draw the sample, you have a number of options available.
I do like the idea that Commissioner Murgia has of making it UG-specific. I was surprised last time that it was city and county were separated out, and inviting people to think about city and county separately. Um, I think that is hard to do, and I think we could solidify, we could probably economize one page, probably more, just by simplifying the survey. There's, uh, I'm sure some, some part of the craft in terms of how redundant things are, so you can double-check a person's answers. I don't know if you do part of that as well. So part of the length of it is determined by what you need as a statistician to get an accurate response. But I think there might be a way to simplify it as UG-specific services, um, and then to mitigate for, um, or to weight it out, as you said, with Bonner and Edwardsville, in terms of their specific interests when you ask, uh, a question that's broader. Um, I think that's interesting. I also think, and I'm just questioning, um, looking at total cost, Commissioner, when you did your survey, Commissioner Murgia, was it about twenty thousand dollars?
Oh, um, no, it was like fourteen.
Like fourteen thousand?
Yeah.
Um, because one of the questions I had is, would it be, it wouldn't be cheaper, but would it be more economical, which is not the same as less expensive, to do individual district ones rather than countywide one? Um, I don't know how that works, but it was a question that came to my mind. If we had a significant overlap in them, then you could, you, you could, you could bring the, the data together, it might not make any difference to your team. Um, the other question is, if you spent, if you sent out forty-five hundred surveys, and you're sending out about eight thousand countywide, and you spent out forty-five hundred, I mean, that level of density, would going up to the four hundred per district even get you the level of data that the commissioners are wanting? Or would we need to go to forty-five hundred sent out per district and spend fourteen to twenty thousand dollars per district in order to get that level?
Yeah, it's really less a function of the number you send out, as far, the function of the number of completes. So I don't remember what the response rate, but
Seven hundred and ninety-five.
Yeah, so we ended up getting about fifteen to twenty percent back. So that's really the key thing, is, uh, you have a much larger sample, and then what you have to do is look at, well, what portion of that population do you want to assess? So in your situation, all you really need is thirty randomly selected respondents to have statistically significant data. So in that case, if you do, get eight hundred, or let's say nine hundred surveys, just three percent respondents gives you statistically significant data. Whereas, if you're looking at a hundred and fifty, you can only do sub-analysis for populations that account for twenty percent of that area, if that makes sense to you, and that's the
But at that rate of return, with almost eight hundred back, that's double what we're talking about here. Would even spending a hundred and nine thousand dollars get to what the commissioners want, or would we need to spend a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, the real challenge would be, is if you end up having tailored surveys completely for each area, there's just going to be a lot of professional time in the development, and that's what actually sometimes gets costly, is you'd end up working with each district to develop their survey. And, uh, that survey was done in what year?
Yeah, so this was
Oh, seven, I wait?
Yeah, so we're talking almost ten years of inflation, so even the, the cost of the professional time will have gone up during that period.
Yeah, but let me also tell you, the, just so you know, um, three pages of my fourteen thousand dollar survey were health questions from KU Medical Center that they helped fund. So those questions were specific to a particular health-related concern. So back then, it would have been significantly less money. Um, and I do think, a, as you said, Mayor, the combination of the city and county as one, my concern is, when you ask someone question, a question, if you want a legitimate answer, they have to understand the question. And I think some people don't necessarily always understand the difference between what is still on the county side versus what is still on the city side. It has to be very straightforward. We have to remember that we, as commissioners up here, understand more about government because we're up here, but the average person on the street doesn't necessarily pay that much attention. So we have to make it as easy as possible for them to answer. And so, since I'm talking, I do want to respond to, Commissioner Walker, you are dead wrong about, um, you know, thinking, the, the first thing that politicians do, they get themselves in troubles when they think they know what their constituents want. So when I came into office, I was adamant I would not be one of those politicians. I do not know everything, because a handful of people call me. Um, that's not what, um, you can't base a whole county's issues on a, on the vocalness of a handful of people. And, um, people, I had suspected that, um, it wasn't property taxes that was the number-one issue or concern in my di, district. But what nobody had guessed is that sixty-five, sixty-nine percent of my respondents, their number-one concern in my district, was curb and sidewalk. And I will never forget Dennis Hayes approaching me in the hallway and saying, "Who would have thought the people of Wyandotte County in your district want curb and sidewalk?" Not one commissioner, not one elected official had even uttered the words curb and sidewalk prior to the results of that survey. Many policies appear at these unified government have changed as a result of that. More urban commissioners now are talking to their constituents about curb and sidewalk than ever before. That is the fact. So there, and, and this is the other point I would make. Not every district has multimillion-dollar deals served up to them on a silver platter. Some districts have to work for development. We don't have a NASCAR in District Three. We don't have other multimillion-dollar projects in District Three. Okay? So for me to improve the lives of my constituents, I have to roll up my sleeves and get involved, which means I have to go sometimes incrementally, block by block, to figure out how to make those areas better. We all know, in the urban core, there are pockets that are better than others. And to build momentum and to build out those areas, we have to be able to identify those areas around it that show the greatest potential for improvement. I've, I've, I've talked about this before, and for me I've talked about this before, and for me, this topic is well beyond the survey. It's more about how we redevelop and how we stabilize Wyandotte County as a whole. I've said this before, it might be a bad analogy. I view our commission sometimes as a basketball team. If we all play our spot, and we stay in our spot, and we play it well, all of Wyandotte County will be better. Well, in my spot, I have to pay attention to the details. I have to pay attention to the little things, because it's multiple little things in my district that are going to make the big difference. So that's why this data is particularly important to those areas that aren't having multimillion-dollar development deals come to their area on their own.
Commissioner Walters.
I just want to make a comment about the Bonner Springs Edwardsville phenomenon. So I don't think really tabulating results by city really solves the problem completely. The problem is, somebody, there's still less than 100% understanding of exactly what the UG is versus the city of Bonner Springs, believe it or not. And if you're in Bonner Springs, if you get a survey in the mail with unified government all over the envelope, and you open it up, and it says unified government on the letterhead, you're thinking, okay, this unified government is asking me for my opinion on something. And you will go down there, and you will, I think, in a lot of cases, get answers of what that resident thinks of the unified government or Kansas City, Kansas. And I don't think it's automatic that if somebody says, "What do you think about police service?" They probably... Some might, some might not, and I think most might not, think of Bonner Springs Police Department versus Unified Government Police Department. So it's confusing. And if you really want to survey what the people in District 7 think about the Bonner Springs Police Department, you need to say that. And not just say, "What do you think about police?" Or "What do you think about fire?" Or "What do you think about this or that?" Because when people see the Unified Government logo on everything, they will be thinking Unified Government, and they'll be thinking, "It's interesting that they're asking me about their police department, and I'm not sure why." Just like some always say, "I just voted. I don't understand why they wanted me to vote for the Unified Government mayor." But they did. So that's the phenomenon, and I don't think just tabulating the results by city is going to solve that. I kind of leave that up to you. It's an unusual situation.
And I've dealt with it in other places. And typically, if you are trying to distinguish city versus county services, the language of the survey just would be, please rate the following services based on the community or city where you live. And so you can do little things like that to get people to basically compensate their ratings to get the answers you're looking for.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm generally in favor of the survey. I think that what we have to come to a conclusion or to a point of understanding amongst ourselves is having a consistent level of expectation of the data. For me, I want, I see it as a continuous process. So if we're just going to go through the motions of saying that we're going through this survey, and there is no process that takes place after that, in terms of what do we do with the data, then it's certainly a waste of taxpayer, payer money. So as we look at the consistent level of expectation, we may not all be on the same page in terms of what we want to see from that, but at least there should be some threshold of what we would like to see. Whether it be county-wide or district-wide. Obviously, as a district commissioner, I'm very much interested in what's going on in my district, particularly as a newer commissioner. And so I'm thinking, to Commissioner Walker's point, what am I going to do with the data once it gets to the table? Once I get the information, I want to be able to move with that information and impact my district with pinpoint accuracy. So I will tell you, I'm a little surprised by the cost of it, particularly when I look at it on a per-page basis. And this is a good education process for me. So I'd like to make sure that the information is as pinpoint as possible so that I can serve my district. I'm no different than Commissioner Murgia. I want to make sure that I'm identifying the hotspots in my area. But I think that there are some general county-wide questions that we could all benefit from as well. So that's my two cents on the matter.
So can I just provide clarity on something, Commissioner Johnson, just on regard to... So I don't think I'm doing a good job of explaining. You are right, there are a number of questions. So let me give you another example, I'll try this. So when you talk about quality of police in a particular area, what Chris is talking about is you're asking for the opinion of where they live at. So when you don't have a lot of people you're surveying, you get a broader sample. But if you can go down to the block, you can literally look where people are having positive interaction with police versus negative. In regard to what you do with that, we can all choose to do different things. But what I've done is in areas where they don't have as good of a relationship with police, because we're just talking blocks, we're not talking the whole county. We're talking this particular block area doesn't have a good relationship with police, for whatever reason, they're giving them a negative mark, even though the rest of my area is giving them, think they're fabulous. I go, I can go over there, I can call a town hall meeting, I can find out what's going on over there. Another great example was, I view the red color as an F, I mean that I'm flunking that. And so I have a red... When you look at animal control on my survey, there was a five-block area in what I call Lower Argentine, which is now Commissioner Markley's district, that was flunking me on animal control. And I thought, what is going on down there? It didn't cost me any money. I drove my car down there and looked around. That didn't work, I got out and I walked around. And before I knew it, there was a pack of five dogs following me around. And when I knocked on doors and said, "Why are there a pack of five dogs around here?", they said, "Joey has three dogs, and when he goes to work in the morning, he opens up the door and he lets them out, and he lets them run around the neighborhood, and they come home at night, and he lets them in." And it took one phone call, it didn't cost, it wasn't a major budget discussion, it wasn't an argument. It drastically improved that five-block radius' quality of life by me making one phone call to animal control to say, Joey, I'm not obviously saying his right name, Joey's letting his dogs out during the day, could you please go tell him to stop doing it? The community doesn't like it. He did. Now, I'm not saying it's always that easy. I'm just trying to give you more gross examples to show you how, in areas like yours and mine, where developers aren't flocking to make major changes, we have to get what we can get. We're out there scrapping for our people to do the best we can for them. Those little tiny things, curb and sidewalk, stopping a dog from chasing him down the street, those drastically improve the lives of some of the poorest people in our county. And so the only way I can drill down on that is to have that data. By asking more people, each one of us will get that information. Each one of us will get that on the block level. What you choose to do with it would be totally up to you. So you're right, the standard question, quality of police, we're all going to get very different answers in every corner of our district. And I love Chris's suggestion about, just tell us about where you're at. How's police, how's fire, where you're at? And then that's, let's look at that. How is snow removal, where you're at? So instead of me yelling at Mike Tobin because my area is gold, and I don't think he's pushing snow over there, he can actually... The other thing you can look at, as we talk about accountability and good employees, he can say, hey, this whole section up here is getting a bad rating for snowpiling. That could be an employee issue. I'm not saying any of our employees would do this, but maybe that snowplow driver is pulling into a park and going to sleep. We have no idea what's going on until we get to that level. And that's why I agree with Commissioner Philbrook. We need to provide that data to our directors and let them handle it and figure it out.
Commissioner Bynum?
I have a couple of technical questions about the survey process, and then a couple of bigger-picture questions for the group. Commissioner Murgia, the block-level data that you got, are you referring to your specific 2007 survey? What about, is that what you were...
It's right here, yes.
Okay, so a couple of years ago, when we did a community survey, did you get valuable data?
I did not, I found the data completely not valuable at all. It was too high-level. So, for example, when they, look at this question, this is from your '14 survey. It says satisfaction with the monthly sewer fee. And this is that manila yellow color. The whole county is the same color, which means that it's average. It's a C if you're going to grade yourself. My point is, you're not going to tell me, because I get calls about people very upset about the sewer fee, there are pockets where people are very upset about the sewer fee. I want to know where those areas are. And I'll tell you where it usually is, people that are on septic, that don't utilize the sewer system. I want to know where that is. How do you solve that, Commissioner Johnson? You look at those areas. I will tell you right here, because this is sewer data right here. That gold area right there where I'm getting a D, this is on stormwater runoff on properties and sewers. That's because this whole area up here is on ditches with culverts. So how do you solve that? We set up a benefit district. And five years later, this spring, they're going to kick off this benefit district in this area. And you know what else this addresses? This addresses the question on sidewalks, where I got an F in that area. So I'm going to knock out that problem, and I'm going to knock out sidewalk by forming a benefit district where the majority of the cost is going to come from the people that live there. And I'm going to rid myself of that problem.
Okay, thank you, thank you, I appreciate it, and I appreciate the data. I agree with the desire to have the data and see what it's telling us about our districts. My technical questions on the process are, I'm looking at the timeline. So from February 20 to March 31, we're going to conduct, create a summary, and then a final report. So out of that 40-day timeframe, how much of that is going to be spent on conducting the survey, getting them out and back?
It's about 30 days.
And so you're confident that whatever level of surveys we desire back, you can do that piece in 30 days? Because in April, we're going to have a presentation of the results. And that's one of my higher-level questions is, for this group, is April a time that's going to help us be impactful about budget decisions based on these survey results? Okay, so Commissioner, you had suggested the Listening Tour questions could be incorporated, but I've not seen anything further with regard to that, so...
Yes, that was, and that was just to suggest, that's why I sent it to all of you. That really isn't a district question.
Correct, but I'm wondering, you know, if that's a discussion topic for tonight, because tonight's the meeting where we're talking about the survey. But if those are valid questions, or if that could be added in a way that could be tabulated, I mean, I can see, for example, what Mr. Merle Bland is doing by basically taking those categories and allowing people to do the same thing that we did at the Listening Tour, which is make your sheet add up to $12 million. Is that a fair question for this, and I'm asking that of the group? So, because I think that also might provide important budget information for us.
Absolutely, I totally agree with you.
The last question, I guess, is, sorry, it's back to the technical part. Can you help me understand, when you mail out the surveys by district, what is the technique used there? Who has control over who gets one and how we get one back beyond, say, the two of you?
Well, what we do is, let's say that there's 20,000 people in each district. I'm just putting a rough estimate. Let's say that that means that there's 7,000 households. Each household has a unique address, and so we're going to randomly select a number of households from those 7,000 to get the survey. So it's all completely random. Once the households are selected, they'll be mailed the survey with the cover letter. For those that were able to obtain email addresses, we'll also send them an email, letting them know about the survey with a link to an online option. We'll then also do phone calls to try to maximize the response. So we've found that, once we give people three methods to respond, we'll get a much higher response rate than if you do just one method.
So when you say, for those that you are able to obtain email addresses for, are you saying that you obtain those through some sort of list purchase?
Yeah, we basically do an address-based sample. So address-based sample, so the addresses are selected, households are selected. Not everyone has a phone number, not everybody has an email address. But to maximize response to the survey, we try to follow up with people with every method we can.
Including maybe a postcard drop, did I understand that?
Yeah, we actually do a mailing. So every household that gets selected gets the survey in the mail. If the response rate is low, we'll actually do a second mailing. But we'll also then do emails to those for whom we can get email addresses and phone calls to those who we get phone numbers for both landlines and cellphones.
Part of my question is because I'm curious, and I did a fairly major survey more than a decade ago back in another work environment. So I know that we had things in place for, even though I wasn't involved in who got the survey, we knew the addresses of where the surveys went. So we knew we could postcard mail those folks and say, don't forget to send your survey back.
Yeah, the actual address information for the households printed at the very back of the survey, and there's a disclosure to the respondent indicating the reason the address is there, so we can better understand.
And I just, I'm really just looking for, once we, as a group, identify how many, and what will the questions be, and what dollar amount are we willing to pay, that we all are hands-off at that point, with no further influence in the process.
Yeah, that'll strictly be with ETC instituted at that point.
Commissioner Townsend?
Excuse me, just to clarify for me, the line of questioning Commissioner Bynum brought up. From what listing are you getting these addresses? I guess my basic concern is that the surveys that go out in District 1 or any other district are going to occupied homes. How is that...
We actually work with a company called Edith Roman, which is a subsidiary of InfoUSA. And what they use is, they basically use hundreds of sources of data to make sure that the people who get the surveys are most likely the most resident, or the recent occupants. So they're a good provider. There's no list in the world that's perfect, but it tends to be about 98% accurate. So that's the reason we use them, because we don't want to waste a lot of money and send surveys that aren't going to end up at somebody's house. So we make sure that we use a source that's reliable, and they are.
Do you know what they're using? Are they using election rolls, tax rolls?
They probably use thousands of sources. What they do is, and they're updated regularly, it's amazing. And that's kind of the scary part, everybody knows about all the... You can buy lists and get information, that basically if you were living someplace three months ago, and you moved in someplace last week, and you filled out an application, you know, for utilities that day, your utility company probably already reported it to some list site, and we get the new address that quickly. So, but it's not perfect. You know, there are some people that are no longer at that address. So, but we try to make sure that the sources that we use are as accurate as possible, because that way, we don't want to waste a lot of money sending mail out that all comes back undeliverable, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner McKernan?
So, you know that I started advocating for a survey the day I was elected and showed up here. And I do think there's tremendous utility to it. But I think that one of the things, and even if we choose not to do it, I'm still going to collect my data and make my maps, and thanks in advance, Mike, for helping me get those data. But I think that what we have now is, we have an opportunity, or at least we have a little bit more work to do to flesh out what it's going to look like and what it's going to cost. For example, if we combine city and county and just made that one question rather than separating it out, that might eliminate a page or a page and a half from the previous survey and not really change the data that we get back, the answers that we get back. So I think that one of the things we might consider is, if we were to do some modifications to the questions now in light of this discussion, then consider, how long would the survey be? Then consider, what would the cost be? And we'd have a whole new table of stratified levels of cost, based potentially on a revised survey that would still give us great data. So we might have a week or two's worth of work here, where we would then have a new appreciation for what it would actually cost. And we could make the decision, we choose to do that, or we choose not to.
Okay.
One commissioner wanted the data, the other...
Correct.
Okay, so I have a question that I didn't understand your answer, if you gave it to me. Okay, so I, I have a question that I didn't understand your answer, if you gave it to me. Commissioner Murgia's first survey had double the number of respondents that you anticipate at your highest level here. Would going to a hundred and nine thousand deliver the same, the level of detail she's wanting with half the respondents?
The answer is absolutely not. And I would ask you, is how many of you answered your phones ten years ago? And how many of you answer your phones today? Doing survey research like this has gotten much harder. So the unit cost is substantially higher now than it was a decade ago. And so that's the reality, is we won't get the same response rate we did to then, now. So we have to try a lot harder to get a valid sample.
Okay, that's, so that's, that's one question.
Well, I was gonna say, one clarification, though, and correct me if I'm wrong. But the number that you show on that chart is the number you guarantee. You're gonna get us at least four hundred. But that doesn't mean that Commissioner Murgia might not get eight hundred in her district. It just means they're not gonna let us get less than four hundred.
Exactly. So the response rate may be better, but we're anticipating worst-case scenario for the response rate. So if we get four hundred and fifty, you'll get four hundred and fifty in the district, or whatever the quantity is.
And if I remember last time, there were areas of our city that we had a higher percentage response than others, and you had to wait it.
Exactly. And we'd have, we'd do that again this time as well.
Yeah. Okay. In some areas, you had to try harder to get more respondents. Okay. Okay, then I have, I think we have three. We have four questions that I think we need to get some consensus on. So we can give the staff some direction on what survey to start building. So I have four questions, but if you have a clarification first, I'll go first. Go ahead.
So the more I listen, the more I'm kinda swing a little bit more toward the definite information. The more defined information. Now, 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 now. Calm down, calm down, kids. But what I would like to see is, is that, I guess my question is, is can, can we not? No, forget that. Let's make it all positive. Is there a way where we can use most of the questions? Like, I read the questions you guys suggested, and they're all very similar. Each one's asking almost the same thing, except you're using neighborhood names. Okay? And that sort of thing. Is there some way we can use similar question for every district? And then let them fill in the neighborhood, or something like that? So we have definite information for that area.
So sorry to jump in. Jane, that is, you are spot on. We're having to ask all these questions because we're not asking enough people. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, no, I understand.
So let me give you an example. One of the questions I wanted, I'll, I'll just give you one of the questions. I wanted to know how many, the quality of life in Argentine and the quality of life in Rosedale. Well, I'd only need to ask, rank the quality of life if we dug deep enough where I could get the data in each neighborhood. If I could get the data deep enough in each neighborhood. Right now, it's so vague, I have to ask per neighborhood on a separate commission sheet. I just wanna make sure.
No, I, I.
Cuz I didn't get it for a long time.
I understand what you're saying.
I'd eliminate those questions. And the only question I would need is, please rate your quality of life. Because then I'm gonna get this detailed neighborhood level.
We're gonna know exactly when they send them out. We'll know what neighborhood these people are from. You know, and so they.
So let me give you a neighborhood you can relate to. So there's a neighborhood called Hanover Heights in my district in Rosedale. They rank their neighborhood so high that it's blue right here. It stands out as, so I know that I'm getting a B or better in Hanover Heights for Wyandotte County. Do you see what I'm saying? I know I'm not getting that up here.
I, I know that about some of my own neighborhoods without that.
Yes, but, but this is just validation.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. I just wanted that.
So let me see if I can, if I can consolidate what we wanna do. One question is, do we want to move to away from the city-county separation and just ask UG-specific?
Well, not even UG. It's just gotta say government.
Yeah, just government. Just do away with the differentiation. Cuz we do have the two kind of redundancy. Is there a desire, a consensus that we would wanna move that just to government services?
Yes.
Okay, I don't see anyone hating that idea. Okay. So that's one. The next question is, I'm gonna do the two easy ones first, then we'll do the harder ones. The next one is, is there an interest in taking some of the questions that we did with the Listening Tour in terms of giving people an opportunity about how to allocate those, that twelve million dollars? And try to work that into this, leveraging some of the page savings from the previous decision? Are people open to that, to see what it looks like? You got a sample of that?
It's a, it's a short question that nine-nine-nine.
I really don't feel one way or the other. I just was curious what you all thought about that.
We had a form, I worked with Lindsay, we had a format that you have for, had for the meetings, Listening Tour meetings, but it, for space issues, we went to something like this.
And just seeing it for the first time here, I would probably comment that I'd probably take perhaps what you've learned before and have closed-ended responses. Otherwise, if it's all open-ended, it'll be difficult to analyze. But if you actually gave some choices, then that'd help you prioritize. Okay. So are people comfortable doing some rendition of specifying the star bond payoff? People okay with that?
Yeah.
No, okay. I gotcha. We're not gonna make it the focus of the survey, but an addendum. Okay. The next one is commission-specific. And there's gonna be two questions. There's gonna be two layers to this. The first is, do, are we open to trying to get a page doing some savings through the consolidation of questions as we consolidated our government consolidating our survey? And then having a page of commission-specific questions? Now, I wanna, I'll just ask it that way.
I'd rather save the money on that and spend more money on getting the more surveys sent.
Yes.
I totally agree. And there's some data I want pretty bad. It's not on there, that I'll tell you, I'll forego that. To get more quality data from this.
So the value is more surveys, fewer questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Fewer commission district-specific questions.
Cuz you'll get the district-specific data in more detail if you send out more surveys.
Yes, we'll get what we need if you go deeper in the number of people you survey. For the most part. You're right.
Yeah, that's, that's it. I mean, you don't, if, if you're gonna get more detail for the questions that are there, but if you wanna ask people what color they want their street, and that's not on the other surveys, you're not gonna get that.
They're going to be black with white and yellow stripes.
Yeah, so, so it's just a matter.
The streets are gonna be. Is there, so here's the question. We're all, everyone has the opportunity to make suggestions. I would say, if you have a question that's, that's valid in your district, it's probably valid in other districts as well. So if you have a suggested question, they're probably transferable to other districts as well. I would be surprised. I'm not gonna dare him, cuz he's got one. But if there's a specific question that we ask, say, about quiet zones. I'm just gonna guess.
I can relate to that.
There are other parts of our community.
Commissioner Markley and I can relate to that.
That might be interested in quiet zones as well. So there might, there, yeah, so there might, for different reasons maybe even. So, okay.
Different kind of quiet zones, huh?
Yeah, that's right. So, okay, so we, the interest is more on the level, the, the depth of it than the breadth of it. Is that what you're saying? You want a deeper look? So then the question is, do we have a consensus? Can you go back to the pricing slide? Okay. What we did last time was the top line, twelve hundred county-wide, about a hundred and fifty per district. At forty, well, it's probably a different cost then.
Not much, actually, so.
About the same. The goal that I've heard is to go to the deeper level and maybe look at if we can abbreviate the survey a little bit, if it can save us some money.
Deeper level meaning more?
More surveys, the dot, the four hundred per district. Is that the goal, four hundred per?
Forty-five hundred is, was mine. I, if there's a difference between four thousand and forty-five hundred and it's substantial, if it's not, then it doesn't matter, but.
Well, I'm just saying four hundred.
It's four hundred. Oh, I'm sorry, four hundred. I was looking at the, the whole total number.
The minimum four hundred.
So we would be looking at four hundred per district, minimum. Guaranteed minimum. Are people comfortable?
Is that gonna give us the best study?
Yeah, well, that's my question. Will that give us this level of data?
Yeah, what it'll let you do is probably for any population or any area within your district that accounts for about seven percent of your population, you'd have statistically significant data. And that's what I was trying to explain before, is what you're looking for is a sample of at least thirty that will give you something that's really meaningful. So if you have four hundred, you can, you can look at any area with, so if you have a neighborhood that has seven or eight percent of your population in your district or that area, you'll be able to look at it with statistical confidence. You can then break it down and have groups of ten and things like that. But there ultimately is some limitations for any sample size. Even with your sample of seven to eight hundred, there ultimately were some limitations there as well.
So does that mean we will know which areas were, are statistically?
Well, it, what's gonna happen, I guess the way I should qualify is, let's say that you have an area in your district that accounts for twenty percent of the geography, but there's only one person who lives there. Probably not gonna get many surveys, and it's not, you see it from that area, so.
I know, but I guess the, well, we've had that information from you as to what areas are not statistically.
Well, there's a couple of things we can do is, for, oftentimes, if you're interested in your neighborhoods, if we're able to get like a neighborhood.
This is why we're going there.
Yeah. If we're able to get a neighborhood overlay from you, we can actually aggregate the data within your, so we could create maps for your districts that then show for the neighborhoods within your district. So rather than just get county maps, we can actually create district-level maps. And that's what I think that you're looking for last time that was of much greater value. So with four hundred, you can do district-level maps. You couldn't do that with a hundred and fifty.
Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you. I think that last statement got to the confusion that I'm, I'm having. So at two hundred, if you're guaranteeing two hundred returns, that's the guaranteed column, as I understand it. Can you get the level of detail that my fellow commissioners here want?
Probably not the way they've described it in this meeting. They're probably gonna want the four hundred or more.
They want a thousand.
Exactly.
Take four hundred.
And, and really, the way it works is, if we were gonna do just a survey for a city of twenty thousand folks, I'd recommend four hundred surveys for that city. So you kind of have eight cities, and that's essentially would be the recommendation. If you wanted maps that would actually show you within that city what the results look like. In this case, we can create maps for you at the district level with four hundred completed surveys. We're not gonna be able to do that if there's just a hundred and fifty or two hundred, cuz there's not enough respondents to really make it meaningful. Does that make sense?
Okay.
I understand.
You understand?
Yeah.
Okay.
I understand. Not saying I go along with, but I understand. I think I would urge my people, if you get a survey, fill it out. That's the main thing.
If the response rate's better, we'll process everything we get.
Yeah, fill it out. I, I'm just having difficulty absorbing a lot more than forty-six thousand four hundred to get it there. So my urging would be, where's the camera? District one, constituency, if you get it, fill it out. To me, that would be the most effective. Because I kinda know what some of the problems were gonna be. Maybe not as specifically as from Street X, Third Street to Thirty-third Street to Fifty-third Street. But the level I'm at, and maybe one day can get to her level of detail, that's gonna be sufficient for me. So I just in good conscience couldn't see supporting a lot more than that financially.
Commissioner Walters.
Yes. I wanted to, I, I did request a separate page for District Seven. And the reason I did that was that we have a K-32 corridor study underway right now. And part of that process is that we're asking for public input on what they think the future of that corridor should be. The only challenge is that the public meetings so far have not been very well attended. There's gonna be two more rounds of those public meetings, and we're gonna try to get more attendance. But it seemed like, seemed a shame to have the survey go out and not take advantage of that opportunity to ask the questions that are being asked of the public at these public meetings. The problem with the public meeting is, you have to make an attempt, you know, to go and spend an evening. And especially during the winter, it might not be the easiest thing to do. So that's what I was getting at. So they were District Seven-specific issues generally. So, sort of as a follow-up to that, so it's two thousand dollars for this extra page. So my question is, we established a one hundred thousand dollar commissioner fund that they, that we could direct money with the approval of the rest of the commissioners. So I'm throwing it out there. If somebody wanted to spend two thousand of that one hundred thousand dollars on this particular task, wouldn't that be an acceptable option?
I think that's legitimate.
Okay, well, I think I would like to do that.
Your questions are back. If you wanted to. Commissioner can.
Let's let him do it. We can figure out how we pay for it later. You know, but, but he needs that. You know, cuz that, and it covers three different cities, you know, so.
Well, there's three commission districts that need it.
Right. But I think it'd be really important that, that he add that to it. So I guess tell him yes now and figure out how to pay for it later.
Okay, are people content with that? I think that's okay. All right. So Doug, how are you gonna pay for all this?
Well, I might ask another question, though, just to clarify. Cuz as we're going through this survey with Mike, I think we identified a few questions. And I think he might have identified in the document that went out of some of them we could take out. Because generally, the answer that comes back to him, and they were about the economic development ones, and you kinda go, do you want new economic development in your area? Yeah, I, you know, even yes or no on that question, it's not really enlightening. It kinda goes to where Commissioner Walker's points were. That's not helping us a whole lot. So I think there's several questions we as staff would probably recommend taking out. And then maybe we could take a couple of the questions that Commissioner Markley has and Commissioner Murgia has, that they submitted for specific. But they do apply across about every district. And maybe be able to weave some of them there, so you wouldn't not get any of those. You'd be able to get some of those built back in. And then we could take some of those out that, you know, yeah, it's consistent from one to the other, but we've moved on from that point. It's not helping us that much.
Yeah, so can I just make a comment about your economic development question that pertains to the whole county? So that was one of the issues that I was very concerned about, is the vagueness. And there are several questions that I don't like that I think are vague. And we don't really care, in the end, what the answer to that question is. So. Yeah, we, yeah, we can't do anything with it. I mean, you know, we just, we, there's nothing we can accomplish with that information, so why ask it? So I, I would suggest, I, I actually had the benefit of working with the University of Kansas and some of their research people. And I asked them to help us craft a question that we could ask our people countywide more specifically what they desired in the way of retail. Cuz Mayor, I know you can appreciate when I say, if they say, yes, we want more retail, hopefully, they don't mean five hundred more dollar stores.
Hopefully.
Yes. So I think we need more specific information so that provides us with direction. And that's not only good for Western Wyandotte County, that's good for Eastern Wyandotte County. So for example, I have a question they crafted that I'm, I've submitted to Mike that literally lists fine dining, fast food, hardware, pharmacy. It actually lists the category of retail, and you get to select from those. So that when we go out to look for economic development in our areas, and there is a category just grocery for grocery stores, you can see very specifically what particular retail they are interested in seeing come to their area. And if we can use Chris's approach to, tell us what you want in your neighborhood. Now, Jim, that doesn't say K-32. But, but at least it gets you closer to what people will find acceptable. So I have that question. I've given it to Mike. I think it's a much better question than, do you like economic development?
I don't think we have unanimity on doing the deeper survey. I do think we have a majority in terms of going forward with looking towards the hundred thousand dollar target area in terms of depth. So I think we'll go ahead and craft the survey with the feedback we've had tonight. Come back with a final look and a final pricing for this group to approve. Because I want this group to see the, the final survey that goes out. So there's no questions about, that's not what we want. The last thing I wanna do, I don't wanna spend forty-six thousand dollars and not be happy with it. I really don't wanna spend a hundred thousand dollars and not be happy with it. So let's, I think we have some direction. So, let's, I think we have some direction to work with, and we'll come back before, well, in the next couple of weeks, with a final draft, a proposed final draft for this group to approve. Sounds good? All right.
I have one question.
Yes.
Real quick, it sounds like the group wants to drill down to the neighborhood level, and Chris said we would need a neighborhood overlay. Now, the research office, we have a neighborhood overlay, I mean, it's aggregated census tracts, but as Commissioner Murgia knows, that's not the neighborhoods she's interested in. So, I, I think we might be challenged. I don't know, how are we gonna get a overlay of neighborhoods and that we agree upon?
How did you get that from my survey? How'd you get it for this survey?
We may have created it, so I have a lot of GIS folks on our staff that do that, so, so that's one of those things, that if you don't have one, we can create the layers that we have.
I think, I thought we got that from the GIS-based mapping at the Unified Government.
Yeah, likely with your planning department, but I don't know, so.
Yeah, I think we have that.
We can, we'll have to work on that.
I think livable neighborhoods does have kind of a general, I'll say general, but a more detailed neighborhood layer, so.
Well, thank you all for your work on this. We are slated for seven o'clock. It takes us about fifteen or twenty minutes to turn the technology for downstairs anyway. But in the interim, just to make sure we have no downtime, we're going to step into the side room for an executive session on litigation. If I could have a, if I could have a motion for fifteen minutes of executive session?
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are in executive session, and we will target to be downstairs by seven-twenty or seven-twenty-five. Seven-fifteen.
Yeah.
I'm sure it is somewhere, I just wanted to make sure.